Move to approve.
Second, it's been moved to approve the minutes from our last meeting of July 18th. All those in favor vote aye please.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. First public hearing item tonight is application Z 17-2A filed by Earl's Engineering on behalf of Heaven Sint Properties requesting approval of a final site development plan for a proposed Popeyes Louisiana Kitchen Restaurant located at 720 South Ohio Street.
720 or 712?
720 according to this.
Any new building that got constructed in that location would be addressed as 720. There was a building to the north that's since been demolished that could address as 712.
I notice this is approximate street address, so yeah.
So at your last meeting, we talked about the zoning change for this particular property, and you made a recommendation about that. And then we explored the proposed site plan. Staff expressed some of their concerns. Some of the neighbors expressed some of their concerns. And the planning commission directed the applicant to revise their drawings to address those concerns. Those concerns are listed in the staff report. On the next day, the following Wednesday, Mr. Andrews sent out a follow-up letter summarizing the action and the recommendation of the planning commission to revise the plan drawings and what the planning commission concerns were and what staff concerns were, and advised them to get, send and resubmit those drawings to us by Wednesday, no later than the end of day Wednesday. And staff has not received any new revisions or new drawings. So at this point in time, there isn't anything more for us to present to you. We do have a couple of concerns with our options here. One option would be to recommend that the, that the plan drawings be revised and postponed to August 15th. A concern with that that staff would have is that we would continue to drag this out. And beings that we do have interested, people from the public and neighbors who are potentially affected by the site, there is some concern with staff with that option. Another option would be to have the particular application withdrawn and the site plan brought back and re-advertised at the point that the applicant is ready to have the new revised plans reviewed by you.
Do we have the applicant here?
It does not appear so.
So can we actually withdraw? He can't withdraw it. He's not here.
You can deem the application to be withdrawn based on the non-response to the letter they received in the request for revised plans. But no, we don't have a request for withdrawal. What our concern is that if you try to postpone it to a future meeting, and we're not getting input from the applicant as to whether that postponement is realistic, then we could set ourselves up for having the same type of meeting.
Yeah, I don't think that we weren't extremely clear about what we expected and what we wanted delivered and the timeframe. We questioned him about the timeframe. He said it was adequate. I don't think there was any room for misunderstanding that there were errors and things that need to be corrected before we could consider it.
Mr. And-
Yeah, there were numerous things.
Mr. Andrews, is there another option available to us? Could this body vote to deny this application?
Could vote to deny the application. You'd have to cite your reasons for that. That would be a recommendation to the city commission. The scenario that could potentially set up was that it would be going to the city commission for consideration, and the applicant ask for additional time to revise their plans, and the city commission sending it back to you.
Understood.
The other downside to that is it would make it extremely difficult for neighboring property owners to keep track of what the status of this was. So what we were suggesting with what I would call a deemed withdrawal is that the inactivity on their side and their non-response, if this was treated as being withdrawn, then we would close out this version and the entire package would come back to you, and we would provide 20 days' advance notice of their plans to the neighboring property owners and have a brand-new public hearing.
Have you had any communication whatsoever since the letter you sent them?
We, Crystal did reach out to Glenn Canuck, who is the representative of the applicant with Earl's Engineering. And his feedback that he got from the development team is that they have several projects that they're working on right now, and that maybe this one isn't their top priority. So that doesn't give us a whole lot of information, but it does let us know that maybe this particular project isn't one that they're focusing on at the moment as well as we need them to.
So we could postpone it for 45 days?
You could. The issue with postponing it, and I think the concern that staff has, is we really want to make sure that the public is engaged with this particular topic and that neighbors are aware of what's happening and when the meetings are taking place. And with the option of, because of the non responsiveness, having the application withdrawn is we give, we give another crack at sending out letters and re-advertising it so that those that really are interested can hopefully stay in the loop a little easier.
Help me understand again, just a little bit on denial. We would recommend that and it would go to the governing body.
Correct.
Typically, what are the governing body's choices there? You outlined one, but obviously there's more than one.
Yeah, they would have all the same options. They could, maybe they think that the site plan is great. You know, that's an option. I'm not saying they would, but I'm just saying that is an option that they have. They could approve it. They could say, you know what, you're right, this isn't a good site plan. They could send it back down to you as they have before with other items. They, they have a lot of, lot of options at their, their disposal there as well.
Now, if, say we were to deny it, and it goes before the city commission, could the applicant provide all the updated information that we required?
Potentially, but then you're looking at a supermajority to, to come up with a different decision than what you've come up with. And something else that, if it does get denied by this body as a recommendation in the city commission, then they cannot re-apply to rezone and go through this process again for six months. And we don't, obviously, this isn't a huge priority because they're not here, but I don't know if that means that they're comfortable with waiting six months before they could go through the process.
Yeah, I guess when we go back to the start of this whole process, I thought the timeline was so important that we were pressured to feel like we needed to agree with everything they said. Do you want to approach, please?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Craig, Deputy City Manager, I just wanted to share that I had a similar conversation with a different individual on behalf of Popeyes, the project manager. He indicated two communities that the project was getting underway. That's where their focus was, and then they probably turned their focus back to this line of project. And so wasn't able to specify a time, but I think, I think it's on hold in their eyes, and then they're going to come back and possibly going to be urgent again. And if you postpone to a date certain, then we're stuck with the public leaving thinking it's 45 days out, and they may show up in two or three weeks and want to re-initiate or re-engage. And so just wanted to share similar feedback from a different individual on behalf of the project.
Thank you.
The other thing about this that is potentially confusing even, certainly to you and even to staff, is the fact that this is a, it's a two-part application. One part is a request to create a unified planned C3 zoning lot, and you have made a recommendation on that. And if that recommendation does not go to the city commission within 40 days after your action, then it is, it dies for lack of action. And so our approach, I guess, is to treat the initial application as perhaps premature, consider it to be withdrawn, and then when they come back to us and say that the time is right, then that would re-initiate that, and that would also bring, again, the public hearing would be on the request for Plan C3 zoning, Part 1 and Part 2 being the site plan. So right now, we have a recommendation from this body that says you think Plan C3 zoning for the whole site is reasonable, but you have not yet seen a site plan that you feel comfortable taking action on. And so now they have become disconnected when initially they were connected together.
So Dean, if we did, if we voted for a deemed withdrawal, to use your term.
Yes.
Am I understanding correctly that that does not eliminate the recommendation for PC3 zoning to the city commission?
It would probably eliminate that because we would not imagine that that would go forward to the city commission within the 40 days. So that would essentially die from inactivity, and we don't see any point in placing that on the city commission's agenda without the site plan. Because it, they don't, they make sense. Why do we need a Plan C3 district of this size? Because this is the site development plan for that district, and we were, we were trying to join the two together. And so now they have become separated. And so from our perspective, the easiest, cleanest thing is to simply, a deemed withdrawal would be to simply say none of this ever happened, and when they come back, they can start afresh with their new plan, hopefully taking into account those items that have been shared with them.
That's helpful, thanks.
Why do we have to separate or combine the two? Why can't we just leave it, just say Popeyes decides not to come? It's still an attractive site for another business. We'd have to go through the whole process of changing the zoning all over again. If we changed it now, it'd make it a desirable lot for any-
But you might also have an office operation.
The applicant, the person who wants to develop this land, requested the rezoning, not us. So why would, why would we rezone something that they requested if they're not going to use it? We would have not, out of the air, pulled this particular site and said, let's rezone this site just for you-know-what-and-giggles so that we can maybe attract a retail business. The zoning was tied to this particular application, so I see them tied perfectly. I can't separate those two.
Just to back it up, to explain what we have presently, is we have a site that is all commercial. One-third of it is zoned Plan C3. The other two-thirds of it is zoned C5. And so what we were trying to do is, if we had a single development that was going to utilize all three of the lots, then it would make sense to have a single zoning district and a single set of zoning rules that applied. Otherwise, we would have to get out our scales and figure out what part of the lot was in this district and what part of the lot was in that district to figure out which regulations applied. It made sense to them, and it made sense to us to try, because if you will recall, you recommended approval of Planned C5 zoning. The city commission granted Planned C3 zoning. So in doing so, they created a lot that had mixed districts on it. And so what Popeyes was attempting to do was to unify the zoning as a single Plan C3 district, and then submit a plan that corresponded to that Plan C3 district. There's, there is, there is some merit to that, but given that the application was filed by them, I guess I agree with Mr. Boxer that whether it goes or doesn't go should be under their control.
I have another question about the property owners, adjacent property owners, and I am very concerned about them. Short of the governing body approving the application, would it not, and it did come back to us, would it not be listed as a public hearing again?
It would be a public hearing. The difficulty is that our statutory obligation is to, the statutory public hearing is the initial advertised public hearing that the planning commission holds. And if that public hearing gets continued and continued and continued, then it becomes the obligation of the neighboring property owners to attempt to keep track of where that is going. And so you don't, if you have a item and you have serial public hearings, eventually you can wear down the neighbors who are unable to attend all of those meetings or to keep track of all of them on their calendar. And so what we are proposing is if this was deemed to be withdrawn, then we would start fresh with the whole process and have mailed notice, and we would send out whatever revised plan that Popeyes has submitted to the neighbors so they can see what is being proposed. Right now, we don't have anything to send to them other than the original plan.
If the governing body, however, supports the planning commission's decision, if there is a decision to deny, then the developer would start from zero. Is that correct?
Developer would start from zero, but the developer would have, if you submit an application to change the zoning on a piece of property and that is denied, then you must wait at least six months before you can resubmit another application of a similar nature.
One last question. We talked about a supermajority. The governing body, in order to overturn an action of the planning commission, would, would need a supermajority under what circumstances?
On the initial recommendation that comes from the planning commission, they can override the recommendation of the planning commission with four affirmative votes. If they don't have four affirmative votes, then they may send it back to the planning commission with direction. You must reconsider the application and submit your recommendation, which can be identical to what you submitted before, but upon the second bite of the apple, then the city commission can overrule the planning commission by a majority vote.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I know it's important for the public input, but I think up to this time, we've heard and listed all of the objections and tried to satisfy them. So I would like to hear what other changes might be necessary to maybe add to the reasons why we might want to postpone or withdraw any action.
We don't have anything accomplished since we were here last time. There hasn't been anything addressed.
Nothing accomplished, but we've accomplished identifying those issues from the neighbors.
Right, and none of that has been addressed.
Correct. But there may be more, is what I'm saying.
There may be more, but we would find that out in the process of public hearings after they are established in another sequence.
Today's meeting is a public hearing, and if we have members of the public that want to speak to this, then you should hear from them.
And that's what we're going to do right now. Members of the public, would that be you, sir? Would you like to speak? Well then, please, approach. We just need your name and your address.
We can do it as a tag.
Yeah, you can be together. You just need to be sure and speak into the microphone, please, so that everyone can see you and hear you.
Larry and Patty Bradengrood. We live at 731 South Ohio, which is right next door to Dr. Ferson's old office. It has been a derelict for, you know, several years. Our concern is, first of all, the traffic, the access, okay? And I'm not sure, that I'm familiar with the codes as far as whether it's a C3 or a C5, and whether you want to combine them. All I know is that there is apartment complex at the back of the property, okay, that has no access to exits unless you go across Popeyes property, okay? That's one issue, and I'm assuming that's one of the issues that you're discussing, try to combine the two so they can get relief with the property on the back of the Popeyes property?
On the interim, until that property has an approved plan and develops, we are working with the owner and their contractor to get an all-weather surfaced roadway from Ohio Street to those back, that back property so that they can have ingress and egress, and so that emergency vehicles can access that property.
Okay, and then the traffic itself, the access, the issue of traffic going north on Ohio approaching Crawford, the left-turn lanes that go from north from Ohio Street to turn west on Crawford, those vehicles that come up and approach that median right there, they're going to have to turn left into the Popeyes property, okay? That's already-
I can't get in and out of the driveway today. We're that first house. So we're directly across the street from this proposed, another food chain.
Right. But then you say, okay, well, why don't you move? Or why did, why did you buy the house in the first place?
I'm thinking of that.
Okay? Why did you, why did you buy the house in the first place? My parents built the house, and it was the first house on the block. I have pictures where there are no other houses anywhere, okay? You can't see any properties in back. You can't see any houses anywhere. It was about built in probably '67, something like that. So all this encroachment came to us, okay? Our property values, I can't sell my house, all right, because of what's around it, but yet I get property tax increases, okay? I appeal, and they go, eh, no, all right? So all I'm saying is, this doesn't help, all right? It doesn't help for traffic. It doesn't help for access. You have the same issue when people approach Crawford and turn left, to the west on Crawford, people turning left going into Subway. Property, those turn-left people backed up right there, and, and people that want to continue to turn left have to back, have to hang out in the intersection because it's too busy.
And we will have that same problem.
And you'll have the same problem.
Already have that same problem.
You'll have the people turning left onto Ohio going south, and people wanting to turn right, and people turning right from Crawford onto Ohio going north, excuse me, going back south, and people want to turn right into Popeyes Chicken. To me, their accidents wait to happen. It's not safe. That's my approach, or that's my feeling. And I think that's all.
Well, that reiterated most of what I said at the last meeting. So I don't, I don't think that-
And we didn't hear about the first meeting, so I was wondering about-
Yeah, I think that, you know, we said similar things, and we, I certainly understand what you're saying and completely agree. But now we're in a situation, of course, where we don't even have an applicant here.
Okay, but my, my response to that is, if it's not a priority to them, okay? If they're not interested enough to come forward and say, okay, we want to continue that, why should it be a priority of yours?
Yeah, well, precisely.
That's what I'm saying. I'm just saying-
Precisely. No, we're saying the same thing.
Okay. I just didn't hear that. It was kind of a, kind of a wishy-washy dispatch of stuff.
Well, we have to be fair to everyone, not just the people who live next to this property. There are developers, there are people that have spent money on this. Hold on just a second.
Yeah, yeah, that's right, go ahead.
We need to be fair to everyone across the board. But certainly, I, for one, am very sympathetic to those of you that live near this property because I sell real estate, and I understand the valuations, and I understand what the effect will be. So we're trying to, you know, come up with something that's workable, but we haven't been presented with anything.
I just want to make sure, or that we get enough information to respond, okay? And that, like other things that have happened, these things just kind of sneakily get approved, okay? Somehow, some way, shape, or form, irregardless of, you know, conventional thinking, I guess I would say.
Well, yeah, but I would say in this particular situation, that's not happening. We are, we are monitoring it.
The fact that we're not seeing anything kind of flies in the face of that, that we don't-
I think, we missed the first letter. We missed the first meeting evidently.
Right, and Dean isn't here to ask, and I, your, your input is valuable to us regardless, but there is a regulation that says property owners within so many feet get notification. It may be, and I, I'm just speculating, it may be that your house, although impacted, although you'll see the traffic, although you'll feel the inconvenience, may have been outside of that little area, you know, they don't-
I'm sure Jack was informed because he's-
I'm across the street.
Jack's probably have put his two cents worth in because they screwed up his backyard.
Right, but it may have been, if they measure from that property, it may be that yours was outside of that.
Interesting.
I don't know.
We are just directly across the street, so that, I don't know.
Given the four-lane nature of that street may have.
But it's a 200-foot radius, so you should have been included.
200-foot?
Right, right.
We're definitely in there.
I would think so. Thank you.
So my question was, before you leave, I just wanted to be clear about your comment about the traffic, ma'am. So you're on the east side of Ohio, correct? Across the street? And I'm, I'm looking at the overhead, I'm just trying to get a good visual of that. So Faith Drive intersects, are you the first or the second building south of Faith Drive?
The first building south is Dr. Ferson's.
I thought you said that, okay.
So we're the house next door.
So you're just south of that?
Where's the door south?
So at that location, even with the left-turning traffic, it's difficult for you to pull, to back out and get access?
Yes, they have the, where you have the left-turn arrow, see, it has the left-turn arrow.
Yes, right.
Is where everyone is trying to turn left going north, even though they shouldn't be. But it's directly, the arrow is directly in front of my house. So I tried to pull in there, but they're trying to turn left on Crawford, okay, north and, and west. So yes, it's already a huge problem.
Yeah.
Traffic is very bad there.
Okay.
I told you, should have sold the house years ago.
Yeah. Also, just the noise.
Noise is bad.
We get it from McDonald's at like 2:00 to 3:00 in the morning, dumping their trash in the trailer, the trucks beeping and beeping and throwing trash into their dumpsters. Wakes us up every night. Good neighbors, I guess.
But it's just a very busy corner. Wasn't planned that way. We were planning that evidently.
I'm sure you know, one of the busiest in town.
Yes.
It is, probably.
If not the busiest, yeah.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else? No?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Just, if I could, and just in response to that, just explain one additional item for their benefit and for yours, is that what planning commission's tried to do here, what staff has tried to do to make this, what distinguishes this application from a standard commercial lot, is that it requires that the developer submit a site development plan that is acceptable to the planning commission and city commission. If this all goes away, we still have commercial C5 zone property that's zoned the exact same as McDonald's and Subway, and the, it's already zoned commercial. It has been zoned commercial since the 1970s. And so under this scenario, we're trying to work towards a plan that the neighbors and planning commission and city commission find to be acceptable and preferable. Whereas if that all goes out the window, then the property's still zoned commercial, and then what gets submitted is simply submitted for a building permit with no neighborhood notice, no opportunity to comment, no opportunity to review. So the process that we are under right now allows for neighborhood notice, neighborhood- neighborhood input, Planning Commission input, eventual City Commission decision, but the northern two-thirds of this property is already zoned for a restaurant, a pharmacy with drive-up window. Any of those things could go there today. So, this process actually allows the commissions and to exercise more control over access points, traffic control, those types of things than you would have under a building permit process.
And that was our intent.
That was your good?
And that's why I appreciate what Mr. Baffus said. I don't understand why we wouldn't go ahead and vote and accept the PC3, and not only are they then the same zoning, but it gives us more control, no matter whether this project goes through or not.
Because we haven't initiated the application?
Essentially, because the application was initiated by them, and we would be hesitant to put it, since they're the applicant, we wouldn't put it on the City Commission's agenda without their knowledge and consent. Now, if all this all falls through, and you want to come back and initiate that, then you could do so.
Can we, Dean, make a note, just to the effect of what you just said, that should this application fold or fail or not go forward, that we would automatically, as a Planning Commission, initiate a request to make it PC3?
You could do that.
I would so move.
Well, I mean, we don't, we don't need a motion to that effect, we just want to make sure that we have that in the record in the minutes.
That'd be good enough for me.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Let me just take a shot at this, and it's the first time. If it doesn't go, we'll figure something else. I'd like to move that we deny application Z17-2A for the following reasons, and I can recite all of them if I need to. Mr. Andrew, would you like for me to read them into record?
Yes.
Number one, the site plan needs to be revised to modify the curb line at the drive-through exit to direct vehicles over the south 12 feet of the right-out-only driving lane connecting to Ohio Street. Number two, a raised triangular curb needs to be shown in the south driveway approach to reinforce the right-turn-only turning movement and to separate the 12-feet-right-out-only-driving lane from the entrance-only portion of the south driveway. Number three, the proposed public sidewalk along Ohio Street needs to be labeled on the plan. Number four, the location of the proposed driveway connection to the Smalley property to the west needs to be shifted to the south to line up with the driveway aisle in the Smalley Plaza parking lot. Number five, the site plan needs to be revised to show the location of a 10-by-25-foot loading/unloading zone for delivery trucks, or a letter needs to be provided indicating that all deliveries will occur outside the regular business hours. Number six, a revised landscape plan needs to be submitted showing at least two and one-half additional front yard tree units in the front yard landscape area along South Ohio Street. Item seven, the landscape planting plan needs to be revised to show at least 60% of all landscape areas being covered with living plant material from the city's recommended zero-scaping plant list, and to identify the source of water irrigation for landscaped areas. Number eight, the landscape planting plan needs to be revised so that at least one-third of the plantings in the south buffer strip are evergreen varieties with all other proposed plantings being from the city's recommended zero-scaping plant list. Number nine, the south screening fence should be relocated three feet to the south to eliminate the three-foot strip lying south of the fence.
Do you want to add to that? Moving of the dumpster and the recreation area or the break area included in that recommendation?
I would be willing to do that. Let me see if I can find some language that would work for us on page 12.
I don't think in there.
Page 12, there's some language.
Yeah, there's some language like that in here. I'm lost.
12.
Yeah, but there's more than one page.
Here.
Okay, excuse me, let's go ahead and continue. On page 12, the relocation of the trash dumpster enclosure and employee patio shelter be away from the residential screening fence.
Are these actually findings of, or, you know, fact that can be used for denial?
They are basis for why don't find the current site plan to be acceptable or approvable.
I said it was a shot, I'm listening, I'm looking for an echo.
Terry, we have continuation again there on page 12. There's still more. Better plant list to include removal of hazardous plants, plant revisions listed above on pages 10 and 11. I'll ask...
I see that. I, we talked about landscape plan two other times before, and that's why I chose not to include that, but I can, if that would, if that gets me a second, I'll put it in there.
Well, you're, you have 10, 10 findings, basically, or 10?
10 reasons that this application was not acceptable.
It would not be findings, but they would be reasons forming the basis for the recommendation.
That's right.
So, the motion that's on the floor is to recommend denial of the proposed site development plan as submitted.
So, Commissioner Box, I would, I want to ask you, then, in your mind, what are the advantages of a motion to deny versus a motion to withdraw the application?
I believe that the governing body, looking at the minutes and the efforts of this Planning Commission to work with this applicant, that that will be overwhelming, and they will vote to agree or not be able to muster at least a supermajority, and this will cause this applicant to have to kind of restart the clock. That doesn't make me happy, but we have dealt with this for the biggest part of 60 days or longer.
Yeah, longer.
So, that's my hope. My hope is to, to, you know, have to restart this clock and be sure that, you know, they'll start kind of over, as far as I'm concerned.
I'll second that. It's been moved and seconded to deny this application based on 10 reasons or recommendations, and this would be application Z17-2A. Any other discussion?
Just one question. Mr. Andrews, you said something about if we went this route, the neighbors wouldn't be as informed, or...
They, if this route is taken and the City Commission concurs with your recommendation, then that will close the books on this application, and then there would have to be a resubmital.
And, but if there is a resubmital, then the neighbors get notified again?
Correct. If they don't agree with the recommendation and send it back to you to directing you to give the applicant opportunity to amend their plans, then that is where, moving from the Planning Commission to the City Commission and back to the Planning Commission, it will be difficult for neighbors to track when that occurs.
Just a point of clarity, would that also affect the application to rezone, and they would have to go to that six-month waiting period before they could resubmit?
Well, what, if you vote this afternoon to recommend denial of the proposed site development plan, then this package is going to go to the City Commission with a recommendation to approve Plan C3 zoning for the future, and a recommendation to deny this site plan. And so, they would have the same ability as you to say Plan C3 zoning is the correct approach, but this plan is not acceptable, and they could do the same thing that you did, which is say, the zoning change is approved, but the site plan is not approved. And then, the main difference is, in your packets today, you have an application that is a application to rezone property and also to have a site development plan. If the rezoning aspect of this gets approved and the site plan does not, then they would submit a new application later for just site plan approval only. And the rezoning would not be a question.
Well, this, my comments are, my own way, perhaps, of trying to sort out in my own head the issues, because there are, they're primarily procedural, but they have an effect on both the business and the public in this case. And I'm drawn toward the withdrawal because of having public notified all along the way. On the other hand, I'm identifying with Commissioner Box's frustration at our continued attempt to address this, and applicants seeming indifferent or lack of commitment evidently to carrying it through.
Let me kind of see if we can clarify, because I am concerned about the public knowing too. How many letters are sent out, Dean, for this property?
How many did we send out? We had 22 owners within the notification area, and that 22 includes the owner of this particular property, but 21 other owners. We had 10, no, nine owners on Millwood Drive, three owners on South Ohio, one owner on Faith Drive, McDonald's, Subway, and the owners to the north, but a total of 21.
And my, and my next follow-up was, how many of those are commercial businesses? Looks like half a dozen, three, four?
Four.
Yeah, everything to the north and to the west is commercial. Our primary, it's primarily south and southeast. Our records show that we sent the owners of 731 South Ohio a letter prior to the July 18th meeting, but...
And then, one other follow-up, and I wasn't meaning to be challenged, but I was just trying to keep it in perspective.
No, right.
I think, and this is just my recollection, that to date, we've had two property owners address this board.
To date, now three.
Okay, now three.
Yeah.
Just, just trying to kind of give us a context to, for you to consider your concern about letting residential, residential property owners know and giving them an opportunity.
Yeah.
So, out of, so let's say out of 20, we've had about 12% response?
Well, keeping in mind that those, some of those are commercial, reduces the number of residential, and my experience has been that people who might have concerns, it's certainly true that they have, they have an opportunity to respond, but that, those three may well represent the opinions of six or 10, which could be half. I mean, you know, for whatever reasons they might have decided they couldn't be, you know, whatever. I mean, that's been my experience before. And we're trying to be fair to the business community at large as well, so...
Exactly. So, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
We need a second.
We have a second. We have a second.
I'm curious if any of the other commissioners would want to weigh in on their reasons for voting beforehand, because it might help clarify my own thinking.
I, you know, I'm perplexed as to whether it should be withdrawn or denied. I can't decide.
My personal feeling is withdrawn, because I, you know, we have standards, we have rules, we, we give those to people. If they can meet those rules, then they have every right to proceed as, as directed. And in this particular case, we were trying to create more control over this property by changing the zoning from C5. So, I feel like if they can modify this plan to do what needs to be done, then, you know, they ought to have that opportunity as developers. On the other hand, I've also been very verbal about not thinking that this plan worked on this site. So, I don't think they're going to come up with a plan that works. So, I'm not really that concerned about it. I'm more concerned about the very thing happening again when the property is resold to someone else. It's C5 who squeeze a restaurant on the north part of it, without coming back through this process, which is where we started out on this, which is how we got to the point we're at right now. That's my concern.
Thank you.
So, I don't know if withdrawing or denying is the, is the point. I'm concerned that denying will further incite those that feel like it is too much control and restriction of what they're trying to do. That's, that's my only fear here, is that it could actually be a catalyst for more, for a push towards honoring zoning as it stands.
I'm not, I'm not as concerned about whether or not developers are concerned about control, because they have to go through all the same steps, whether it's through us or whether it's through city staff. But initially, the realtor came to us to change the zoning, to make the land more attractive for a developer. And apparently, we then tied the two together. And so, that's a problem for me, too. And it's a problem, I guess, with state statutes, too, because of the application process.
I'm gonna ask one more. If the motion before us does not pass, and if we end up with another motion that gets a second, how long can this be withdrawn before it goes away? Because I don't want to be a part of guessing that 30 days from now we're gonna have one of these and it doesn't show up, and 60 days, and after Christmas, and the middle of January. So, you know, that's my frustration here. I am, I am up to here with, well, it's not a good time for us.
Yeah. Well, I'm curious with...
I asked Dean, you know, it's gonna be withdrawn before it dies.
If it is withdrawn, or deemed to be withdrawn, then the application is closed out, and that is, it's done with, until the applicant comes forward and files a new application and starts the clock again. So, we have filing deadlines of August 11th, August 25th, September 8th, September 29th, October 13th, October 27th, November 13th, November 27th. They could, if it's withdrawn, they could decide to target any one of those dates. It would start over at that time, and we would do the 20-days written notice to neighboring property owners, and we would schedule a public hearing before the Planning Commission based on when the new application was filed, and we would start afresh. The, the primary distinction between, from a procedural standpoint, between deeming the application to be withdrawn by the applicant and with... between deeming the application to be withdrawn by the applicant and with a recommendation to deny, is if you make a recommendation to deny, that is going to go forward to the city commission. And we'll see what happens from there. If you deem the application to be withdrawn, then when it starts over, it starts with you. It doesn't go to the city commission, it doesn't go anywhere, it just goes in a drawer until they decide that they're ready to recommit and resubmit. That's the primary distinction.
I was curious, Wally, about with your experience in commercial real estate, if you have any thoughts?
Well, I was not real sold on this in the first place. I think, with all due respect, it's an accident looking to happen. I mean, traffic is going to be a mess for the folks across the street and everybody else, when they're even trying to get a left-hand turn lane into crossing through Ohio Street. Now, that's just, you'll forgive me, but kamikaze, and I just don't think that's the work. I've done too many fast food restaurants all over the state of Kansas, and I can tell you that we've never done anything like this, and I would not approve, I would deny this. I just, it's not a good deal. I'm just not real happy and never have been. So, that's my thoughts.
And I wanted to add that I'm, I will deny it, too. The traffic was a big concern at the last meeting. I stated that. And then, I was looking at the minutes where last time the applicant didn't realize that these requested plan modifications were required for last, the last meeting. And I think you had most of those listed already that we wanted to address last time. And I guess I, it is frustrating that they don't address these things, and, and we questioned, we said, are you sure? August 1st is plenty of time. And had he said no, we wouldn't have had to meet today, because this was the only thing on the agenda.
Right, yeah.
So it is frustrating that it, and it's not about control, although I do think as a planning commission, we should have some say as to how we want sections of town to be planned. So I don't see that as control, I just see that as, like you saying, Mr. Story's wisdom, that, you know, this doesn't seem to be a good fit at this location, but it's not that we're against development. So, those are just some of my thoughts.
So Commissioner Good, are you saying to deny or deem withdrawn?
I will vote for denying. I feel like they've had plenty of opportunity to address these items that we've listed as reasons. There's only a few items that we added last time.
So are we having a vote then, or is there more discussion? Not, let's call for a vote. All those in favor of denying this application based on the reasons given by Commissioner Box, vote aye, please.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to administrative items. Thank you very much for coming tonight. If you approach the mic, sir.
In the response of the statistics on people that don't respond or don't show up, okay? I think there's a, an underlying attitude of people are giving up, because they don't think it's going to do any good, okay? In this case, you're in the process, they've already started clearing, they've already started tearing the place down, okay? So they're going, well, I mean, it must be a done deal, okay? It doesn't have anything to do with it, but that's the thinking that's out there, okay? And it pisses people off, okay? Because they don't really feel that they have a voice, because they believe in their own heart that it's already a done deal, okay? And they're just kind of thumbing your nose, those, and they just give up, okay? And so I, I understand what you're saying, there's not an interest, but I'm not saying there's no interest. I'm just saying, big people give up, okay? Because they believe it's a done deal, and everybody's going to do exactly what they want to do, regardless of what anybody says, okay? That's the feeling that's out there, okay? And I'm included, okay? So, thank you.
I wonder if it wouldn't be appropriate to send a letter, follow-up to the people within the 200 feet to explain the actions that occurred, and help the residents know that their input is valuable.
They get to see the minutes of the meeting. I mean, I know, I understand people are busy. They don't, you can watch this particular proceeding probably 10 times before the next meeting. I, I, I want people to not give up.
I, I want people, I want people to not give up, but we probably can't personally send minutes of the meeting to every affected property owner on every decision that we make. And so I would, I would think that's, the sentiment I agree with, but I think the practicality of it gets overwhelming to try to send that. Tell your, tell your neighbors.
Yeah, you're, you're going next door to door and telling people what happened there, so.
I'll just have to call Jack and help him.
He cuts it by hairs and...
Tell, there's telephone and tell Jack. Is that right?
But there's definitely been times when I wish somebody were in the audience, because I'm indifferent or I'm not sure how to vote, and I definitely listen, would listen to the opinion of those who come, so.
And I want you to know, I definitely concur with your assessment of the situation generally in this, and in this case. It's very true. So appreciate you being here. Yeah.
I also think it would hurt their business. I'm surprised that they wanted to locate there, like Wally said, because it's, any place that's hard to get in and out of, people don't want to go. It won't work.
Well, rather than speculate on that, let's address administrative items, if there are any.
We have no administrative items. We have no preliminary discussion items. We are at work planning, preparing for a general philosophical discussion of this whole planned commercial district process at your, at 2:30, at your, on the August 15th date. And on your regular agenda for that meeting, we have a couple plats. We have a replating of some property on West Elm, and there's a property south of Phillips Lighting, where Westar has plans to construct a electrical substation of some size there, and that is outside, but within a mile of the city limits. And so, under an agreement we have with Saline County, the city planning commission must approve plats that are within one mile of the city limits. Doesn't involve a zoning change or anything. It's industrial property, but the proposal to subdivide off a tract for a substation will be what is before you. But a lot of our focus will be on the study session that will be held ahead of time.
Are we inviting these others to the study session, like Mr. Mays and those that wanted to be involved?
Mr. Mays and some of the others in the development community that want to have input and be involved in the philosophical discussion of the appropriateness and use of planned commercial districts. We'll also, working on a, basically, we'll provide you, like we have with off-street parking and some other topics, we'll do a, basically, a summary of our peer communities and what they do comparably in terms of review of site plans and those, those types of things. So we'll provide you with some history examples of when planned commercial districts have been used. Again, they, they have been, the process has been in place since 1987, so there are numbers of examples, but each one has a different story as to why it was done as a planned commercial district as opposed to straight commercial zoning. And we'll, that, again, from our perspective, is that that's the primary purpose. One of the primary purposes is in a planned commercial district, the neighbors have an opportunity to have input into the plan itself, whereas if you have a standard building permit application, there is no notice, an opportunity to be heard by neighbors. So that, that's the primary distinction.
So, I'm, I'm hearing the chairman's suggestion, which I think is a good one, given Mr. Mays' indication of the wishes to be involved. Does this go to the entire development community about the study session?
We are going to invite the, what we have identified to be the development community in terms of who has gotten packets on that text amendment that's under consideration as well. So, one of our goals coming out of that is to come up with some agreeable criteria that can be applied as to when it is appropriate to use planned commercial zoning as opposed to straight commercial zoning. That will be discussed at the study session. It will also be discussed at public hearing in your regular session, so.
Dean, has anything been, we talked about the bottom of the Viaduct down to Crawford Street there on Broadway. Has anything been brought up about that again, or?
We are, the engineering department has some funds that they have received, and they're looking at hiring a consultant to get some outside technical assistance as ideas for modification to, enhancement of, elimination of the medians that we have from essentially State Street to Crawford. And so Dustin and I are going to be giving them some input on that, but they're going to be sending out a request for qualifications from a consultant to get some technical assistance, but it's primarily going to focus on the medians.
Thank you.
But as far as the land use, that hasn't changed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any preliminary discussion items?
We have none at this time.
Other matters?
Other than the fact that we will meet on the 15th and also on the 5th of September. We do have an application that has been filed for a preliminary plat of the property that is between the south end of the East Crawford Recreation Area and the north boundary of Magnolia Hills Estates, to develop a residential subdivision there on the east side of Markley Road. And that will be coming to you at your September 5th meeting.
Anything else? I'm sorry, you, yeah, what were the boundaries again there? The north-south boundaries?
The northern boundary would be the south end of the East Crawford Recreation Area, or the old airport area. And then the, the south boundary of the property is the north edge of Magnolia Hills Estates. I refer to it as the Heg Trust property. Oliver Heg owned all that property, and he, it's an L-shaped parcel that has frontage on Markley and extends all the way through to Holmes, but the plat is just for the western portion of budding Magnolia Road. But it will touch Magnolia Hills Estates on its south boundary. So if you're driving by there, basically, if you take the Markley Road frontage from the north edge of Magnolia Hills Estates up to where the city's ownership of the airport area starts, it's that infilling that area with a proposed subdivision.
So we, we could require sidewalks on Markley there?
You could.
Hopefully, they have read our list of requirements that we would like to see in new subdivisions, but I have a feeling they probably haven't.
And I'll bet that will be a discussion.
Yes. I would love to have thought that they would have reviewed that and prepared this with all of that in mind, but I have a feeling that we won't see that, so.
The minimum standard that you all adopted with our change to subdivision regulations makes that a minimum requirement, even if the street doesn't have curb and gutter, so. But only on one side. You can pick the side.
So, so then, that means that the Magnolia Hills subdivision, if we wanted a sidewalk, the city would have to pay for it?
Well, what it does is if we get the sidewalk section there between this piece and East Crawford Recreation Area, it makes it that much more feasible to get a connection from Stone Post Lane up to this sidewalk. But at the time that Markley, at the condition of Markley Road, at the time that was done, we did not have a requirement for sidewalks until the street was urbanized. And now, we have a requirement that says you have to do a sidewalk even if the street is not urbanized.
Anything else?
Not adjourned.
Trying to keep things interesting for you.
Thank you.
We love that.